Good evening. I'm going to call the January 24th, 2023 regular meeting of the Mark City Council order. David O. Sanca, Pledge of Allegiance, Call Down in the South. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, with all nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please proceed. Perpetual minutes for January 10th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. An approval by January 10th, 2023, work session. You had the before you during your questions to approve.
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
I have promptly seconded.
I'm making a amendment, first amendment to add the substance of the amendment from the motion, the first to the fourth one happened during the meeting on January 23rd.
Is there another section to that motion or is that?
The motion was to add the substance of the first to the fourth amendment happened during the regular meeting on January 23rd, 2023 to the meeting minute.
Do I hear second? Here now the best.
I'm making the second amendment to add the following verbatim language to.
Saying there's not been verbatim on the city.
Mr. Mayor, we have discussed this the whole time we discussed about this. I am not making, I'm not asking this council to do a verbatim language. My motion need to add the detail into the meeting minutes to reflect what actually happened, and I want the specific language being called when my motion being recorded. So there we go. I'm making the second amendment motion to add the following verbatim language into the meeting minutes on, for the regular meeting minutes on January 23rd. The mayor called Council Trent out of order on her first amendment motion. She explained her motion will not have order. She then explained that though motion were to put the detail into record so the council can refer when need to. It also help the public to understand what information council received before they cast a vote or each council members point of view on each decision they make. She then asked the mayor how should we wanted her to call the motion to have that language recorded into the meeting minute.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
No ma'am. Do I hear second? Here now the motion goes.
There was no 23rd meeting yet.
Are you done, Mrs. Trent?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, so we have motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. This next.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
The meeting minutes did not reflect correctly the amendment. It just says, "Council can make the verbatim language amendment." It doesn't reflect what is the subject of the substance of that verbatim language.
Presentations.
Can I shuffle a quick? Can you make a motion to add the executive session minutes? I forgot that we had an executive session.
Alright. I need a motion to add the executive session minutes.
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. This next.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
Aye.
I approve the executive session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
I have promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. This next.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
Aye.
Presentations. First off, this is just start of this. It was amazing. Over 7,000 people showed up. There's a lot of thank yous to go around. The fire department for being very creative with some of the fireworks design that we have. There's a list of volunteers that goes down tremendously, and not including staff. There's a number of the police department, fire department, all the works, all of the difficulty job. But we had some volunteers, and two of those I think are going to stand out tonight. One is Miss Lana and the other is Alma. Every time I went over there, they were already working, and they probably stayed with, which is growing. And I hope they all had a good time. So let's start with that. Lana LeBeck. Certificate of recognition. The certificate is awarded to Lana LeBeck for her contribution, selfless efforts, and offering to do the city of Mark. Thank you, January 24th, 2023. And it is indeed a plus. Let me hold that.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I'm glad it's not February 14th.
I know. Yeah, big trouble.
Ms. Alma. I really don't know how many hours you guys did, but you glued a lot of stuff on trees, and it was entertaining. Certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Alma Floyd for contribution, selfless efforts to the city of Mark Lunar New Year 2023. Thank you very much. Try to do something that makes it look like it's a decent picture.
It's a decent picture.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And this one is quite literally, you know, this city is growing in ways that we can't even really imagine. Some of it's innovative, some of it's technology driven, but when you're out there and your peers have programs that sometimes you don't have, and you feel like you don't have the right equipment to play on the field, that was not the case when you looked at how our technology advanced to be able to deliver that program. So this certificate of appreciation is awarded to Alma Trent for his contribution. He can splice me out, I'll stand far enough to shoot him in Photoshop. And I'm gonna. I'm gonna do something a little bit out of order, just simply because it's appropriate to do so, but if Big Mike's wife would come up. And as I'd explained earlier, you know, there was a young man that we worked with, and it was Big Mike's tacos, and you know, he has a very loud brand, you know, that allows him to be well-known, and had a tremendous number of followers in the city he was working with, and he has since passed away. And this is a proclamation for Micah Heinz, where Micah Travis Heinz was born on October 8th, 1982. Was the youngest of six siblings, was a product of Atlanta and Clayton County Public Schools. He graduated from Forest Park High School in 2001, where he played varsity football. He furthered his education by obtaining his bachelor's degree in entrepreneurship and graphic design, he was very good at that, from Johnson and Wales University in Rhode Island. Mr. Heinz was in the fall of 2002, joined the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, where he affectionately known as the Beast by his fraternity brothers. Upon returning to Atlanta after college, he met the love of his life, Cherica Sale, and married on October 1st, 2011, and an amazing family was formed by this union. Using his exceptional marketing and organization and entrepreneurial skills, Micah continued to grow as a businessman. He formed and led a creative marketing group, Ultimate Events 365, and laid the groundwork for his offspring to thrive in the business space. Micah was extremely passionate about his work, his family, and the community. He always gave 100% effort where he took on a project or event giving himself willingly and tirelessly. His kindness, humility, and great strength of character have contributed in measure to the city of Mark and beyond. Now therefore, I, John Lampel, Mayor of the City of Mark, join with all the members of the community in recognizing his contributions to the city of Mark and a shining example by Micah Travis Heinz. You'll be missed, and we thank you for your contributions. Does this? You can speak. I mean, I'm talking to Mike.
Well, I do know, Micah had a big love for the city of Marrow. We all know, he definitely had a big dream of being in that greenhouse down in behind the mall, and would view it a lot of times, and he just, he was just an extraordinary man who did a lot of great things in his short amount of time, and it is unbelievable that this is what is going on with him being so young and a fool taking him so quickly. And I'm just extremely proud of the amount of seeds I see that he's spread throughout this state, and I'm just proud of him, and it's just looking at it all after he's gone, it's beautiful. I'm just simply proud of him, and thank you.
I would just like to say, he works about our two extraordinary staff ladies over there, Markeeta and Karina.
Who are that?
They are to be commended because they put their heart, soul, body, and everything into putting on that event. They've inspired the city. Thank you, Representative Marrow.
Ordinance 2301. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Mark to establish a municipal probation department for field complaint ordinances provided severability provided for optionated effect. This would be the second reading, first reading was January 10th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor, could you please open the discussion?
Open the discussion.
Okay, so in the first hearing, I have asked for the projected revenue expenditure based on historical record that they have, so the council can have a better deal to justify the decision of establish the in-house probation versus with having a free probation, provide the service, and we cut the cost and the revenue stream. But I still have not got a report, have any other council kept a report, but it have not been written, between the city manager.
I can give you the numbers that the chief gave you last meeting. I'd be happy to provide that to you. Thank you, Mayor and Councils. This is the staff. Last, on the last meeting on January 10th, the chief told you that conservatively numbers were $285,000 based on the current revenue that is generated by probation. Payroll of approximately $120,000, leaving me a residual revenue for the city estimated, we don't know for sure, of around $165,000. We don't have a formal report that's based on the numbers we currently have.
And why is that? I multiple time emailed asking the report, and I still have not received it. I asked since the meeting, the last meeting has happened two weeks, and I am not able to see the report.
It's the information you gave me last week, or last council meeting, I'm sorry, but that's, we don't have a formal report, Ms. Trent. That's the numbers that were given to you, that's the best we can do for you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No questions.
Ms. Dean.
No questions.
Ms. Qua.
No questions.
So we have a motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. This next.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
I have spent my vote, I have not been able to see the projected revenue expenditure to be informed on the possibility revenue stream coming in versus the current practice.
Citizens, Congress, general Congress, who's out of the cities, any citizens, Congress?
Well, you know, working this weekend for the Lunar New Year, it was really a marvelous thing for the police officers, for Public Works, for Fire Department, and Van, I mean Vaughn, you were just super great, and everybody, y'all did a marvelous job, and I would just love seeing the little children run around and having a good time, and after all that, it was great. Thank you.
But Mayor, I want to say something as well. Okay, first of all, I would like to thank you, the Mayor and Council, and then all the city manager and everybody in this room, including all the coworker and colleagues. Luckily, we received the opportunity to open the floor for creativity, for the city's growth. I live here all my life, so part of the city, so I want to be able to put my, contribute the effort to, for the city to grow and put us on the map, so that's all I want to say. But thank you, guys, for the support.
And to the city council, this next.
Just want to say thank you again to the city hall staff, and just always, in the moments and opportunities that we have to acknowledge how wonderful the city hall staff is, our PD, our fire department. We're a small city, which provides the opportunity to really get to know, know folks, and you guys, that's all I wanted to do, just take the opportunity to tell you, thank you all for what you all do. It's a calling on your heart to wake up every day and gear up the way that you all have to, whether you're sitting at a desk and having to gear up, or you know, fire PD, we really do appreciate you, we just want you all to know that.
Ms. Qua.
First of all, this was really the best that we've ever given, all of that I have. And I'd like to thank to everybody that came involved, dedicated their time, I mean, it's been a lot of work, and a lot of hours, I appreciate the city. We are proudly, to my understanding, the only city in the state from this kind of event for the community, and I want to recognize that, thank you. And I, I'd like to bring up something, you know, there's an incident happened out there. I received a lot of phone calls and email, I don't know why, you know, my personal phone number, they call me nonstop, but I listened to both side story. I, as a regular person, I don't have enough knowledge to just, you know, of all that, I want to trust our people that doing a good job, but you know, I, I'm asking for, you know, if we could do something like a thought party, looking to this kind of thing to make sure, to show that not that, you know, a couple of people is going to say, we are a government people, you know, be on our side, and, 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 you know, try to cover whatever, but I know we good, but to my opinion, why don't we just show the world that, you know, we have the transparency, and we just have to show that we have done our good, but we haven't done anything wrong, just to my opinion, so that's my opinion, thank you.
Ms. Trent.
Well, first of all, thank you everyone for put our heads together to have a great event Lunar New Year, and we need to start to work on the next coming event, and make every event of the city repeating go bigger and better every year, and follow up with Council Qua Malam comments about the incident. So I have also had requested the mayor to have the city attorney come in tonight, so we can, we be able to look into that, and also requested a body cam, so we can have the outside story, and we will be informed on legal matter, and what should we do, because just like Council Qua Malam and Alma, the email is come in, I don't think it come just me, to every council member, and the mayor, asking us to look into that repeatedly, and I also received phone calls asking the elected official to look into this matter. So when we get this much of a volume of the request, our job is to provide public state of service, and when public ask us, we should take quick question. I still have not received the legal advice in this matter. My concern is the conduct of the business, the way I saw in the camera where the police officer, while he was servicing the public, he also cursed at the person, and she were holding the camera quietly, didn't, I did not have any further information, I have not been able to reveal our body cam, but for me, I can see why I upset public. If we were in the shoe, would we wish to receive that type of service? So I'm urging the mayor and the city manager, please have the city attorney come in and keep us informed, so we know how, so we can better provide public. And the idea of Council Qua Malam, of having a third professional party to look into that is not a bad idea, so we can, if we act, when we act quickly on this, we show public that not only we provide public service every day, but when they raise a concern, we consider and we look into that.
I'm going to chime in here for just a second. You know, there are times when inexperience is just inexperience. There are times when inexperience is inexcusable, and this is one of those times. When you start to defend people, make sure you know who you're defending. I'm going to read you one of the emails that was sent by someone named Brad Newport, and I would certainly look forward to seeing Mr. Newport again. The subject is called Dead Cops. As a former US Marine, if the man in the video below would have killed every traitor capital media, I would have let the good man go free. The civilian pussy cops are low IQ traitor scum and filth of this nation. All Americans should be armed because it is a corrupt, kibidu, police state, and it just goes on. That is not a defendant individual, that is a person who just committed a felony for terrorist attacks. When you have other comments that are just F word after F word after F word, be reasonable. So you can see, and this meeting, we've got citizens here, you know, you guys know us, you know, you, somebody calling from somewhere else expecting you to take a splashed video, like a tabletop version, and you to take it as face value, and then call out our team, that's not going to happen. Inexcusable, inexperience is unacceptable. Ms. Dean.
Again, I just want to say to all the staff, tremendous job, you all went above and beyond. As a council member and as a citizen, I want you all to know, I appreciate everything that you all do. You're here steadfast, and you are a part of the city, even though some of you don't live here, this is home for a lot of you, and I just want to all of you all to know that I appreciate you all being here and the job that you all do. I appreciate Lena and Ms. Palma, I don't know how you do it, but you do it, you're always there, and I appreciate it. Rochelle, thank you. B, thank you. To all of you, thank you. I appreciate it. And as a council member, I do have a comment to Ms. Van, Trent. You're talking about transparency and due diligence in our jobs to the public and citizens. I ask and request, requested a financial report from the finance committee. There, there has been no transparency from your part. You had hundreds and hundreds of documents that you requested, and there should not have been a problem for you to put together a report. And again, I say, if there was anything that you found that we need to work on, fix or whatever, put it in a report. If you found nothing, say I found nothing, but you need to close out the finance committee case. It is a case, and you have no concern as to it being a committee that was formed by the mayor, so that you could look into whatever the matter was that you were concerned about. So I'm asking you again, can you submit a financial summary report of what you found after requesting all the documents that you requested?
Okay, I have, this is.
In writing, I should say, in writing.
This is not the first time we talk about that, so the mayor will answer the committee members. I'm not the only one, I wasn't the only one in the committee, and all the information that I ask for, but somehow will share to among the council. So not only me who have the information, but you guys probably have the majority of the information, and, wait, let me finish what I'm saying, Ms. Dean.
No, I understand, but can we get it in writing?
We are, we are already new. There are no requests during the time that the committee. There are no requests during the time that the committee will exist. If you wanted me to do that, I have no problem, but I have to have the legal stand to do the work that I do, all the, not you wanted me to do. I have the information, the information I asked had nothing to do with finance committee. It was simply a council member governance, the budget, looking where the revenue stream is, looking at the expenditure, to manage my primary duty, which is setting up the budget and governance. Yep?
I'm going to find the answer to that. The information that was shared was also shared with the city attorney. And that city attorney, that is attorney-client communication, which means I cannot release it. There's only one person on this city council who created the information, has the information that is not considered to be confidential, and that is Ms. Tran. Ms. Tran has refused to release that information, and it is the only copy because she created it. The rest of it is attorney-client privileged and cannot be released. She knows that, we know that, and she has refused to release it.
Mr. Mayor, are you, what information are you referring to? Because I am referring to...
The writer's request was for any documents, so it didn't have to be a report, it just simply had to be the sheets that she used to be able to reach the conclusion. And it was related to the garbage service as to which amount they owed us or we owed them, and reference to that. So we could go back into the regular section. But you brought the information to the city attorney, and then you brought it on the city computer. It's the only record that exists. You asked for it, you denied that request.
Okay, and this is why it is important to have meetings, minutes, briefly discussed in meetings, similar, people tend to forget after the time. I do forget about this as well. But the last meeting, we discussed about this specific matter on sending case in report. I already pointed out that several facts, that the open record request, as of the day that we're talking now, the record keeper never asked me to provide the information, first of all. And I looked through the record. The mayor, he was, he remember that the city attorney had that record, and she had the previous client customers' previous. If that is for a public, this council can open that previous, that is our choice, whether we want to give that information to public or not, is not the city attorney's choice, because the previous is the owner, not the city attorney. If we deem that the, that's good for public, we can tell the city manager, go ahead, the city attorney, go ahead and give that information to public. The second thing that I'm reminding the council is, the last council meeting, the last time we discussed about this matter, syndication matter, I already stated that in the email string that the city employee generated the information, forwarded to me, the city, the current city clerk also have the records. So the city already have that information, I'm just a receiver. Why the person who generated the information were not able to provide the information? Because I don't know the completeness, the fullness, the accuracy of the information via email to me. And in that email string, the current city clerk has that information as well. So he only, also own that information, the city is clearly already have the information in two circum, in two circumstance. The first circumstance is the city clerk have it already. Second, the city attorney have it. And if this council want to break the council privilege on this information, yes, we can. And that will be up to the council if you want to transfer and store public or not. I will be up to that because it's, it's not, it's not matter, or have the city, current city clerk provide that information because he were under receiver list as I do. Then how is that possible for that, this information is different from mine?
I think that basically means a nutshell, we're not going to get it tonight. So, good night.